I'd like to call the April, I need my glasses on. The April 3 meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education to order. If you could take a look at the minutes that are in front of you and when you've had a second to look at them, if I could get a motion to approve the minutes from our March 27 board meeting? Sherri, second. Brendan, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Is that unanimous? Okay. Second item on our agenda is the review and approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. If I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Penny, second. Sanguida, all those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on, comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recognition. The first item on our agenda is response to intervention update with Dr. Corenti.
I just need to get all my items and then vote. You know, all my props here. Hopefully you didn't see any of my props when you're.
No, I'm only kidding. I have no props.
No books?
I have no props this evening. I'm not going to be nearly as enjoyable as Glenda was last week. But I wish I had some props. Well, first of all, thank you so much for asking me to present this evening and to give you an overview of response to intervention. As you know, response to intervention is one of our district goals. And when I was preparing for tonight, I realized that this is probably a topic that we haven't discussed in quite some time. So I thought tonight what I would do is give you an overview and what it really means for New Canaan Public Schools and how we go about addressing it. So we do have a district committee and we meet regularly as a district committee to assure that we're aligned with our district guidebook and process. And as a matter of fact, we met today as a committee. And we have several members here this evening that can help to answer questions. They probably look very familiar to you, but I will introduce them for the audience at home. We have Julie Fiera, who is one of our assistant principals at Saks Middle School. We have Sarah Bros, who's our five through eight language arts coordinator at Saks. We have Zoe Robinson, who's our K through eight math coordinator. And we have Glenda Green, who is our K through four reading coordinator. And probably the other person who's most critical to our little triangle of response to intervention would be Susan Bliss. Because when we're looking at response to intervention, not only are we looking at how students perform academically, but also at social and behavioral. So, response to intervention. Response to intervention is not new. As a matter of fact, we've been addressing the various components of this topic since 2008. The purpose behind response to intervention is to provide a high-quality, evidence-based instruction to all students in general education and to promptly respond to students in need of support in literacy or numeracy or social and behavior. In Connecticut, response to intervention is known as SRBI, which stands for scientifically researched-based intervention. So nationally, it's known as RTI, but in Connecticut, it's known as SRBI. Connecticut always has a little flair and likes to make things their own, but there's really no difference between SRBI and RTI. So RTI is a continuum of support and it's made up of three tiers. And tier one is our general education curriculum. And within the general education curriculum, what response, the research behind response to intervention is that it would say that 80 to 90 percent of our student population will learn through the general education curriculum and will learn through the instruction in the classroom. And that is our tier one. Our tier two and our tier three is made up of about 10 to 20 percent of our student population. And the research would say is that this 10 to 20 percent will need additional support, which will include very targeted and intensive interventions to reach the same academic goals that we would expect of our students in that tier one. And so using this logic, it's basically saying that each student gets the support they need to be successful. So RTI is a framework for teaching and learning with multiple levels of support. And the focus, like I said earlier, is on academic and social emotional growth. What's really important, and I think is mistaken and a misconception by many, is that RTI is not a pre-referrals process to special education. Rather, it is a proactive way to assist students who may need a different approach in learning the same content. So we look at our curriculum. It's research-based. We determine how we're going to go about teaching that curriculum. And then what it's saying is that you have 10 to 20 percent of that population who might need a different approach in learning the same curriculum. So how do we go about differentiating? Sometimes that differentiation will occur right in the general education classroom by the teacher. Other times, it's going to be more intensive and targeted and delivered by maybe a math specialist or a reading specialist. The other important part of RTI, it's really a way for us to ensure that we are implementing our curriculum with fidelity. And as I go about talking about how we come together to look at our district benchmark assessments, it's a way for us to take a look at the curriculum and take a look at the instruction. So we start with tier one. And really, the overarching goal of tier one is that we want all students to achieve the grade level benchmarks that we've established. Some of the grade level benchmarks have been established by the state. Other grade level benchmarks have been established by us here at New Canaan Public Schools based on the curriculum that we're teaching. And we're always looking at those benchmark assessments in literacy and numeracy. We know that we still have a ways to grow in how we look at students from the social, emotional, behavioral perspective. And we have a difficult time always coming together as universal teams to look at that data, but that's an area that we're exploring more and more. And we had a lengthy conversation today at our district committee. So it is something that we're looking at. But what we do do, and we do it very well, is we come together as a grade level team at least three times a year to look at our benchmark assessments. So a benchmark assessment is usually given in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And it's going to cover a variety of units of study that students have learned already. So it's not just one unit of study. They might come together in the fall in math and it might be three or four units of study that they've done at that time period and they're taking a summative assessment that we've created at the district level. And what it allows us to do is when the grade levels come together, it really gives us an idea not only to look at students and their performance, but it gives us an understanding of how well our students did on the benchmark assessment. And it allows us to analyze the data. And we might be looking at the data for many different purposes. Naturally, we're always looking to see which students met the benchmark, which students didn't meet the benchmark, and which students really exceeded the benchmark. And so we're looking at that and always making determinations for all the groups of students that are sitting within us, in front of us. But we also do item analysis. And we really spend some time looking at the benchmark assessment. And we might say to ourselves, wow, I'm looking at question number 10 and I am noticing across the grade level that a large majority of our children did not do well on this question. So now we have to go back and we have to say, well, was the question faulty? Was the question not really a good question that we asked? And should we have worded the question differently? Or is it a possibility that perhaps we didn't cover it within our curriculum and we should have? Maybe our pacing was off and it was something that was taught in the last unit of study and some of the teachers didn't get to that within that unit of study. So naturally, if the kids haven't been taught it to the fullest, they may not have done well on that question. So we're always doing that analysis of that data and asking ourselves questions about it. The other times, we're also looking at patterns for within instruction. So when the teachers come together and they're sharing their data and having conversations about it and what went well in their classroom and what some of the children were struggling, you look for those patterns. Are there patterns across the grade level? For example, did a lot of the students not do so great in elapsed time? So now we have to go back and we have to talk about, well, how do we go about teaching that so all the kids understand how to do it? Or maybe the children in one class did exceptionally well in elapsed time and the children in three of the other classes didn't do so well. So then the conversation might come to, so what are you doing that's different in your class? And how are you going about instructing it to get the results that you're getting that we're not getting over here in our class? So what I've done is I was able to do some training this past fall with our instructional leaders. So not only our coordinators, but our building administrators, as well as our reading and writing and math specialists. And so I have just a three-minute little video that I want to just kind of show to you the kinds of conversations that go on. So what you're going to come into the video on is really where they've spent time looking at the assessment, having comments and understanding of the different assessment that's being asked. It's a math assessment. What's most interesting is they've already talked about the strengths that they've noticed. What do the students really have a deep understanding of and what the students are able to do? Now they're moving into what they call their writing of their SMART goal. The SMART goal stands for Specific, Measurable, Agreed Upon, Realistic, and Time-Sensitive Goal. So that's where we come up with our little acronym SMART. And so what they're trying to do is think about what might be that SMART goal that all the teachers are going to address across the grade level to assure that the kids move forward with their math understanding. Now remember, when you're looking at this assessment, what they're going to be looking at is identifying areas that they perceived as weaknesses for their class. Now, we know that we just can't go on with our instruction and forget about the weaknesses. Otherwise, what happens is we create instructional gaps. So they have to go back as they're moving forward in their next unit and figure out a way to spiral back. So I'm just going to pick up a little piece of that conversation because I think it will give you an idea of the conversation that's happening about the curriculum and the instruction, which is really critical to our data teams.
Forward to our, so we sort of identified the weaker areas, grades level wise, and our strengths as well. Looking forward at our SMART goal. So if they're looking for a SMART goal, what would be something that would really benefit the students and move them forward as a grade? Just talking about.
Can you go back and, as a lead-in to where you're going, go back and read the weaknesses that were identified? And as she's reading those weaknesses, think about either prioritizing them or categorizing them, or are there certain ones that go together? Because that can help you to think about that SMART goal.
Can I just add, a few of our talking, identifying the standards that we were talking about. And some of them, there are some overlapping standards and it kind of goes along with those, you know, areas. So we can kind of look at that also as we start to hear those and connect it to something. And then I'll pick, if I can create a goal. So we have elapsed time, estimations in years 10, mathematical language for addition, subtraction, story problems, applying computation strategies to real world, real world's multi-step problems. We have estimation, subtraction, word problems, identifying arithmetic patterns, including patterns in the addition table or multiplication table, and explaining using properties of operations, special patterns that change, problems with three addends. Elapsed time. Elapsed time, mathematical language for addition, subtraction, story problems, clearly expressing mathematical thinking, applying computation strategies to real world multi-step problems, blindly adding and subtracting with a thousand, using strategies and algorithms based on base value, properties of operations, and a relationship between addition and subtraction. Three addends. Elapsed time. As well. So which one comes up for everybody? I think I pulled two out, but we'll. It's your story, your problem, and multi-step problems.
And how do those compare to what you saw in mistakes kids making? You said four out of 10 kids adding, subtracting. So how do those things then compare to what you saw with the mistakes kids were making? Actual mistakes.
So how would focusing on mathematical language help those four? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's connecting those two things together.
If they understand the language and what their problems, asking them they're able to use the right operation and choose a strategy that satisfies the problem if they can understand what the problem is. And it's not to have the word that how many more, which is like where they can block his up. In younger grades, they learn look for more if they need to add. It doesn't say how many more did one have planned the other, or this weekend, last week. Yeah. And just that are units, the distance from, you know, the space between, you know, all of that. I feel like there's a lot of.
So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the video clip. So what they were doing is when she was rattling off the weaknesses, she was reading what each of the teachers had written. So that's where the replication, that duplication of elapsed time kept coming up, or the multi-step problems. So each of the teachers will complete a form. They'll generate what they see as strengths within their classroom and then they'll generate what they're seeing as weaknesses. And then they build upon those strengths to figure out how they're going to go back and address those weaknesses. It's not something that we can just move on. You have to go back and you have to make sure that kids have a clear understanding of that mathematical language in order to move on to the higher orders of math. So that just gives you an example of some of the pieces of that universal screening team when they come together and they're reviewing that assessment data. And then they'll establish a SMART goal and they'll measure that throughout the marking period as they move to their next benchmark assessment. Towards the end of it, what will happen is every so often, there will be children who will not meet that benchmark. And despite all that they feel that they've done, they're feeling that maybe they need to do a little bit more of a strategy group or maybe do something a little bit different for that child. And that's where they'll create what they call a differentiated instruction record. So that means they're making that phone call to the parent. They're letting the parent know that the child didn't meet the benchmark and that this is what they, as the classroom teacher, is going to do for the child and help to close that gap. So that's our tier one. That's all part of what we want to do as part of our differentiation of instruction and hoping to meet the needs of all the kids and hoping that they meet that benchmark. So then they move into what we call tier two. So now tier two is where we're going to provide interventions to students who, despite all the differentiated and targeted instruction that happened in the general education class, that they're still not meeting that grade level benchmark. So now at this point, the teacher's been progress monitoring. They've established the goal. They've been working with the child in a strategy group. Oftentimes, it's a small group of students that come and they sit and they figure it out and they work with the child. And they determine that despite all that they're doing, that the child continues not to meet that benchmark. They usually consult with the math specialist so that they know exactly what to do from instructional purposes. It's very important that they do something different than what they're doing in their mini lesson. So it's not just more of the same. They have to go back and teach it in a different way, in a different strategy. And they really rely on those content experts to help them to move that forward. So they then move to what they call tier two. And what they do is they look to the student study team. Every building has a student study team to assist them. So they'll bring the case forward to the student study team, where it will be usually a administrator, a psychologist, the reading specialist, the math specialist, maybe a guidance counselor, and a classroom teacher. And they're sitting at the table and the classroom teacher's talking about the progress and they're now coming up with what they call a tier two plan for this child. So that tier two plan is going to require a little bit more specialized instruction. And that's where a reading or a math specialist is going to come in and really either A, do a little bit more diagnosis to try to figure out what might be going on with that child, or actually doing some services with the child. Those services might be right within the classroom or they might pull those children out and do some small group instruction with them. Usually a couple times a week to try to help close that instructional gap and help them to be successful on the next benchmark assessment. Once again, there's a timeline established and parent communication that's taking place. And that's really important that the parents are informed all along the way. Usually, they go from tier one to tier two, but every so often, a child just goes automatically tier two. So there might just be that big of an instructional gap that we know and we just have to get them that intensive support and give them what they need. And so they go to tier two. The next part is our tier three. Once again, it's highly intensive. The people are going back to that student study team. They're talking about the progress that the child is making. Sometimes in tier two, they're creating another goal for the child to help move them along. Sometimes they're getting to tier three and they're thinking that they probably lead a little bit more intensity. So it has, now we might be saying that they're going to be serviced more frequently by a reading specialist or by a math specialist. And they're still, once again, developing a plan, creating a goal, communicating with the parents, and determining how that child will meet that goal. Now this is really just kind of that fluid process. Sometimes they move from tier three, back to tier two, back up to tier three. Sometimes they exit out of the tier two and tier three, all the way back to general education. That's just how we continue to monitor the progress for the kids. I think what's really important when you get to that tier two and that tier three, that's really where the expertise of those content experts come in handy. And we really work hard to get them trained in as many different methodologies as possible. So one of the district goals is to continue to make sure that those leadership people are trained in a lot of different research methods. So for example, one of the research methods might be Orton Gillingham. So it is a very prescribed way in which you go about teaching reading. It's research-based. It's a specific program. They've been trained in it. They know how to work with the kids. That's not to say, though, that they give that expertise to our general ed teachers because oftentimes, the general ed teachers are going to those reading specialists or those math specialists and saying, help, what should I do for this child? And then they'll say, if you try doing this with the child and work with this and work with sound cards and work with this with the child to help to see if that can help to make the child make growth. So really, when you look at the framework, it really goes back to that whole cycle of instruction. And part of the cycle of instruction is really that ongoing assessment that we do all the time on students. That's that formative assessment. So there's the benchmark assessments, which is where it's more summative and we're looking at several units of study over time, but it's that day-to-day formative assessment that really drives the instruction. It's that intentional planning. So not only do you take that formative instruction, that formative assessment, but then it's really looking at it and saying, okay, so now I've got the group of students in front of me. What am I going to do for this group of students? And how am I going to address their needs within that classroom? And then it's really thinking of the learning experiences that all the students have and really bringing us back to what effective instruction is all about. And it's our job to meet the wide range of learners within our classroom. And we do this through a variety of instructional groupings. I think last week, you heard Glenda and Sarah talk about strategy groups or guided groups. We do that through collaborative experiences, independent practice. It's all part of those workshop models that we establish in those grade levels that allow us that flexibility to work with students and to help them to move forward. I think what's most fascinating is when we started to really move forward with response to intervention within the district, what we saw was a real decline in our identification rate in special education. Because we were being very proactive with students and what was happening was we were discovering that it was more of a gap in the instruction versus a child with a disability. And so when we talk about responsive intervention and we're talking about being proactive, our job is to exhaust everything that we have in general education before we even move to that referral process within special ed. I think what people, another misconception, is people think that children have to go to tier one, to tier two, to tier three before they can get to special ed. At any time, we can make a decision if a child's not learning at the rate that we think they should be learning at and there's more gaps, to move right over to a planning and placement team meeting and have that conversation about special education. I think that's important to remember. So I think the other piece that we've really been working on is the school climate. So a big piece of this is really making sure that we assure that all children are having a positive school climate, a positive environment to go to on a day-to-day basis. We see a lot of those behavior matrices around the schools. You'll see, what does it mean to be ready in the cafeteria? What does it mean to be responsible? What does it mean to be respectful? At middle school, you'll see those habits of success where they'll talk about the rubric and where the kids actually begin to rate themselves to say, oh, I'm over here with my preparedness, but I really need to work a little bit more on my self-reflection and setting goals and figuring out what my next steps are. But it is an area that we need to explore and continue to explore when we're talking about tier two and tier three for students. So that's it for this evening. I'm open to questions and I have some wonderful people who can answer them for me as well. Just be careful what you wish for though. Glenda's got things still hidden in the podium here. No, I'm only kidding. By all means, we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dr. Corenti. This is such an important part of, you know, sort of what we do in this district. And so I thank you for, you know, outlining it so clearly and succinctly. Let me open it up to the board for any questions. Brendan?
So how has RTI changed over the past few years? And then how often are the kids assessed? Is it sort of constant where the teachers come together as a team and talk about how the kids are doing?
I think what has happened with RTI is that we've really improved in the research-based instruction that we're providing to students. So we've gotten our reading specialist more trained in specific areas, one being Orton Gillingham. I think another area that, over time, has happened too, is we have that turnover of staff. We were discovering that many of the teachers who were trained in our old Word Study Program, Fontis and Pennell, were no longer trained in Fontis and Pennell. And then we've started to realize that there were some weaknesses with Fontis and Pennell, with the phonological awareness and the phonemic awareness and the phonics and how it was being instructed. So then we really spent some time researching and that's where we decided to move to foundations. And that has happened within, just recently, the last two years. And I think it was a great initiative to move forward. I think where we were seeing some of our K-1, 2 teachers, where they just may have not had the specifics and how to address some of those kids that might have been having some areas in that early literacy and struggling with that. And so now we've opened it up so you have more people who have a plethora of ideas and ways in which to instruct students. As far as assessments, it's really three times a year. So they come together for reading assessments and they come together for benchmark assessments in math. And so those are the two areas that they come together. That's not to say that they're not looking at the writing because that is part of it, but that tends to overlap in the middle school with the ELA because it's reading and writing together. So they're coming and looking at that benchmark three times a year. In the middle schools, it would probably be more two times a year as they move into the sixth through eighth grade. So they tend to look at their fall assessments and then they have their midterm assessments and then they have their summative assessments. And that's what's bringing them together. But I have to say that the teachers like coming together to talk about the data and they find it really beneficial to hear strategies. And so it's not unusual for them to even come together at the end of a unit assessment. So they might finish a unit in geometry and then find themselves coming together as a team and talking about the results that they've had and the successes and the things that they'll need to go back and reteach. But really, it's more those big benchmark assessments that are taking place that they come together to assess. And part of that is because you need to give the instruction over time. So you need to make sure that the kids have received the instruction in the curriculum before you go about assessing them. Does that answer your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Penny?
I was wondering, how do we, how many students end up like basically always being in tier two throughout? And what percentage kind of go into tier one, tier two, and then drop down again? Do you track that?
We haven't tracked it, but I would say that it's pretty fluid. I mean, what happens is it's really being managed at the building level. So they know who is in, those kids that they're having conversations about that are at tier one. They know the children that are in tier two. I think you see a lot of tier two, tier one, tier one, tier two, back and forth between those two tiers. back and forth between those two tiers. Where they, when they hit that tier three, that intensity may last a little bit longer. And they may need that tier three instruction for a longer period of time before they're dropping back down to tier two. But it will vary. Not sure if you guys think any differently or have anything else to add. I think what's most interesting is at the elementary level, the people who are sitting at those universal screening teams are the grade level. All of the teachers within that grade level. Usually, one of the administrators, but often two of the administrators are there. And then if it's a reading, it's usually the reading specialist. If it's math, the math specialist are sitting there. When you move into the middle school, it's the grade level that's coming together. But we also have our coordinators, so either Sarah or Zoe are part of that. And then usually, one of the administrators is there. It's usually that grade level administrator or the administrator who might be overseeing ELA. So it's not unusual to see Julie Fiera at a lot of the ELA USTs, because she oversees ELA, as well as just one of the grade levels.
Maria?
I remember the tier one, tier two, tier three chart a few years back, and it was pretty divided down the middle. And I understand the instruction, the academic instruction, direct instruction, then intervention, and you move up. I'm not really clear how that looks for social-emotional learning all the way. Is, are there lessons? What are the standards? What are the benchmarks? What are the interventions? And does it change as you go up in the higher grades?
So that is an area that we're working on. So in the elementary level, it's, you're often looking at what is the, all the whole, you always start at what's the school-wide behavior expectations? And then each teacher kind of adopts those school-wide behavior expectations, and they bring them into their classroom, and they teach the children about what it means to be respectful or responsible, whatever might be the focus. What does it look like? What does it sound like? And then from there, you have sometimes children who have a difficult time following those behavior expectations. So oftentimes, a teacher might be creating a little plan and communicating with the parent about those behavior expectations. Maybe they're giving them some motor brakes, or maybe they're letting them stand to do their work, or maybe they're doing one of the sensory seats, if that's something that might work for them. And then, if they're still continuing to have those issues, then that's where they probably would consult with either the counselor, the social worker, or the psychologist for support in their classroom. Is there other things that I could be doing? And then usually, that person might go in and consult. Where we're still struggling with is what kinds of interventions really need to be put into place for that tier two and tier three to make it a strong model. So we know that we have individuals that are available to do social skills group or to work with students in those areas. But it's really going back and researching what are some really research-based interventions. I have to say, the research out there is not that strong. But we continue to work on it, and I know it's been a big effort of Susan Bliss, who's come on board. And as a matter of fact, after the meeting today, I saw emails even going back and forth of, "Have you looked at this?" or "Have we looked at this?" And to come together and have those conversations.
What I was wondering, too, is, you know, like for academics, we can go to power school and see how our students are doing. For the social-emotional piece, we really can't. Will that ever happen? And also, is it too much to ask the teachers to do that part, too? The, like, evaluating, assessing? Is there a universal screening tool for that?
So there's no universal screening tool for it. Most of the screenings that you would use in that area tend to be used in the special education area. So you might be talking about a rating scale. You would never give a rating scale to all students and see how they perform on that. Those are really specialty tools that are used by trained people, by a school psychologist who has that background to do something of that nature. K through five, we do have, on the report card, the indicators for success. And so those would be an area that would be used as a universal screening team. You'd be able to look at those to see how are children performing in those areas. And so that would be one of what our screenings would be. So you'd go back to what those, I think there's about eight of the different indicators that are asked, and the children receive, not letter grades, but they receive their M or their C or their satisfactory or consistently making progress. And that's been a consistent way to look at data for K through five. Six through eight, what they've found a lot of success with is when you go to look at the science grades and how the science grades are given them off of those habits of success, and they have the rubrics. And so they have found some work in looking at that through science. So they've been looking at that data. They're talking about using that for their digital citizenship. Is that a way to kind of look at students and also for their health? And see if that's a way to grade students. And then you're always going back and looking at attendance and nurse referrals. That's other significant data when you're looking at the whole social-emotional behavior piece as well.
Hazel?
I just want to, I want to thank you for all the effort that you've put in to make this work and function, because it's, I can know it's full of a lot of details and a lot of meetings and a lot of discussions. And I think about the double benefit, it sounds, from not only the students getting such a challenging and exciting environment to be in for learning, but the idea that you all are sharing with each other. And I know that each of you is so special. How wonderful to be able to sit down with each other and say, "What do you think about this?" What do you, and to have all these people to give suggestions and ideas as to how to help a student learn. Because you may have, you may have had the idea, but you haven't used it for a couple of years, and for someone else to say it, you go, "Why didn't I think of this?" "Yes, thank you." Or it's a new idea of some type. I can see that it might be difficult to have meetings to get everybody together. How does that work out? Do you need extra help and support from substitutes or other teachers? How do you have your classrooms so that you can have meetings? Because that's the important part of it.
We're very strategic. Actually, our first data team usually always falls around November 8th, which is usually our professional learning day. So it gives us an opportunity. They're not sitting in a UST the entire day, but for a portion of their day, they're coming together and having a conversation about the assessment data that they have on the students. It's a great time of year, because they're usually triangulating the data. They're not using just one assessment. They might be looking at their map data. They might be looking at performance on data from last year, maybe on their standardized assessments, trying to triangulate that data to make sense of the students that are sitting in front of them. So the November 8th date is always really critical to us, because we do use part of that day to bring those data teams together. At the middle school level, they'll use their department meetings or their team meeting times to come together to do those USTs. And at the elementary level, we work really hard to try to get some common planning time for the teachers, and then we'll use one of those common planning time blocks to run those USTs.
Sounds so terrific, because the idea, again, seemed to me many times I'd go to a staff development, and I'd say, "What a great idea this is." And there'd be a wonderful speaker who would go back to Chicago or someplace. And on Monday, I'd go, "What was the second step I was supposed to do?" So if you've got this kind of a dialogue going on, you've got the staff development always there, working and able to meet. So it sounds like it's really working well.
Sangita?
I just wanted to get a little clarity, because I wasn't quite sure. Because I know you've got the assessment, and you mentioned that you do that three times a year. So then there's the intervention part of it. So are the kids getting the intervention or whatever else more often or whatever, whenever a teacher sees that there's a need to go to tier one, tier three? Is that also happening three times a year? How does, what's going on with that?
So the, the tier one is happening all the time. That's what's going on within their classrooms. So not only are they using their benchmark assessments, but they're making decisions every day on the formative assessment that they get on students. And they're making those decisions about whether they need to pull a strategy group, whether they need to reteach something to a student. When they create the plan for the student, they're establishing a guideline for that child. It can't wait until the next benchmark assessment. That's too long of a time period. So if you think of November, and then you think of February, and then you think of May, that's a long stretch, and you always want to make sure that you're meeting that child's needs. So they're doing their progress monitoring, and they're making some decisions about whether they need to change their plan for that child or whether they need to move to the student study team, which would put it at a tier two. And then, once they're in tier two, that, once again, there's another timeline established. So maybe they're going to do eight weeks of instruction using, you know, working on this specific goal with this specific instructional strategy. And they're going to measure that progress to see, over time, if they're closing that gap. And then the student study team comes back together in eight weeks, and they talk about the progress. And they decide, do they need to do more? Do they need to change the goal? Or is the child ready to go back to tier one?
Right, that's what I was thinking, it was too different, yeah. But I just want to make sure that that's what was...
Penny?
For students who have consistently needed a fair amount of tier two and tier three support through eighth grade, how do we support them? But haven't yet reached the level of a PPT or something. How do we support them when they go to the high school?
So we work with them through, we have, we've hired a reading teacher up at the high school who works with them. They have the writing center, they have the math center. They have different courses that they'll offer to students as well. But usually, that's where most of that instruction and assistance will take place. So it will be, they'll have two blocks of ELA, for example, in the high school. So one might be their ninth grade English class, and then the other might be a reading class. And I have to say, that's a tough position to fill, because you're looking for someone who has a certification for seven through 12 in English Language Arts, and also holds the reading certificate. So there's two different certificates in the state of Connecticut. So you're, most of our people that hold those reading certificates tend to be in the primary grades, because that's really where the whole teaching of reading comes about. So to try to find someone who's that content expert, who also has that reading certificate, is a challenge. We did find someone. She's here at the high school. She often will meet with Sarah and Evan, who's our department chair. She often will attend some of our professional learning that will take place in the middle school, just because we're working on looking and triangulating of data. There's also the writing center that the students will go to, and I know that we receive reports on how the students are doing there, and then we have the math center as well.
Sangita?
I'm just going to switch it to the other side, the students who need to have more, because they need to be challenged a little more, they're getting bored with the curriculum. Does that follow to this? Or is that a different program? Or how do we deal with those children?
No, so part of when they sit for the universal screening team, what they're doing is they're determining who met the benchmark, who was below the benchmark, and who exceeded the benchmark. So I have sat at grade level meetings before where we've had all the kids meet the benchmark, and then we've had a group of kids who have exceeded that benchmark. So the conversation is very different. It's talking about, what are we going to enrich these children with? And how are we going to differentiate the instruction for them? So oftentimes, you are still going back to those content experts to help you figure out how to stretch. But it's not unusual for the classroom teacher to say, "I have a group of students who didn't meet the benchmark. I have a group of students who met it, and then I have another group of students who are exceeding it." And so they are really making three different lesson plans when they're designing their lessons. And that's that intentional planning. So it's looking at the students in front of you and deciding, "What do I need to do for this group? What do I need to do for this group? And what do I need to do for the group that can probably get up and teach my class?" And so how am I going to differentiate for them and make it just as meaningful and give them meaningful tasks? And once again, it's not more work. It's diving deeper into the content and really creating a meaningful task for them.
Maria?
Does the RTI model follow in the high school? Do they study their, you know, test scores or whatever, and then break them out and...
So in the high school, it becomes a little bit more challenging because of all the different courses. So probably the best area that we've been working on, and it is an area that we need to continue to grow in, so, has been the English, because that tends to be the grade level subject area that all kids have to go through. So they've developed some common assessments. That was actually part of some of the curriculum writing that they did last summer. And they're coming together and calibrating those assessments and having conversations about those assessments and talking about the curriculum as well as what they need to do for the students. But we know that RTI probably, in most high schools, needs to be explored a bit further as far as how we support all of the children.
Yeah, if I could, just, I feel like I must as high school principal in my background. So the model is different as you, as students move up through the elementary self-contained grades with the teacher doing that work, into the team model at the middle school, where you have those teachers working together. Then you get into the departmentalized model at the high school. So it does pose some challenges for this type of work. Jill mentioned the English department. They have been doing some very good work with this for years, where they use their freshman portfolio, and they'll do collaborative scoring of that portfolio in the spring. Take a couple of days, they'll blind score them, and then look at the results and plan around for students, how to provide them with support. Math department's doing some similar work. So instead of being team-specific, it becomes department work that they do, using common assessments across the departments. They'll look at midterms in sciences and do, you know, so each department has its own sort of strategy that it uses. Jill mentioned the differentiated instructional record. There are some examples of that being used at the high school as well, just with some students in order to plan for those that are identified through some of these common assessments that exist in the departments. There is, there isn't a model for a high school that works extremely well anywhere. So we're sort of figuring this out along the way, as most high schools are. But a few years ago, we put PLCs in place at the high school where teachers collaborate with departmental colleagues. And occasionally, in those PLCs, they'll also look at assessments, look at the results, and use those to plan forward in how to meet the students' needs. So it's going on in a couple of different ways, in a departmental approach versus the team or the, you know, self-contained teacher approach.
I have a couple of questions. The first being, can you give us a sense of how, as a district, science isn't included in this program? You know, the state and whatever hasn't mandated that. But how, how do we, as a district, do this within the science curriculum? Because I think, you know, given where we are in STEM and the importance of that going forward, I would assume that this would be important work for that subject area.
So data teams actually do exist for social studies and science. They tend to exist more in the middle school. They're not happening at the elementary schools, because you're, you're really got that self-contained. And really, at the elementary school, they're really looking at how to make better readers, writers, and mathematicians. And we know that if they're stronger readers and stronger writers, they're going to do better in those content areas and mathematicians, quite frankly. So really, that is their emphasis at the elementary school, and that's really what they come together about and have conversations about. And really, the focus of RTI is literacy and numeracy in helping kids to grow. But at the middle school, they do come together to look at their science assessments. So both Melinda Meyer and Mary Hannah have put in common assessments at the middle school. So they come together, they look at those common assessments, they do the same exact protocol that are followed in reading and writing, so that they're having good conversations about kids. What's most interesting, too, is, in particular, at the middle school, we've been doing a lot of work across the disciplines. So there's a lot of conversation that's taking place with all of the coordinators and the administrators at the table. And what they're discovering is sometimes it's the same children in ELA and in social studies that are struggling. And how do we help that child to move forward? Sometimes, they're very successful in the area of science. And so those are different conversations as well. So they might show up over here in ELA and social studies, but they're not showing up for the math and the science. And that's not to say that sometimes they show up for math and they show up in science. It really will vary at the middle school. But they do come together to look at common assessments and have the same kinds of conversations. Like I said, what's really important about this is the instruction and the curriculum piece. Because you really are able to take a close look at those assessments to say, "Is everybody teaching to this curriculum? And is everybody instructing the students? And are we getting the same results across the grade level, regardless of they're good or bad? If they're, they're good, then that means, okay, so we're moving forward. And if they're not so good, then what do we need to do? Is there something wrong with the assessment? Or is there something that we need to adjust within our instruction or curriculum for the students?"
And then, could you just, for those of us who are not in education, just give us some ideas of what tier two and tier three interventions look like at the elementary and middle and high school? I know it's a lot, there's a lot of different pieces. But just, just to give us an idea of what those might look like. And how, you know, I know that they are implemented during the day, but, you know...
Sure. So at the elementary school, really it's going back and, and we know a lot about the teaching of reading. We know a lot about that phonemic awareness. We know a lot about how students manipulate sounds and hear sounds. Rhyming is a big indicator of their success. Being able to say the word bat, now say it without the buh. So being able to substitute bat with, you know, a B at the end. So there's a lot of work with nonsense words as well as real words, so that's really that manipulation of sound. We also know that we cannot put all those letters out in front of them unless they're hearing and manipulating the sounds first. So part of that goes back to the teaching of, of reading. So you might have somebody who is really struggling in the area of manipulating those sounds and meanwhile, the rest of the class is working on letter-sound correspondence. So a reading teacher is going to go in and really spend time with them, maybe working with just colored cards and each of the cards is a different sound. And so there's no letters in front of them, but now we're manipulating just the sound card. So they're sliding the red card forward, buh. Now they're sliding the blue card forward, ah. And then the red card again, t. Notice the B and the T are in red because those are my consonants and the vowels in a different color. So they're, they're introducing things in a different way to those students. When you move into the middle school, it really comes down to the teaching of different reading comprehension strategies oftentimes. But that's not to say, do we have children who might not be doing well with their fluency and accuracy? We might. So this past year, we made sure that our reading specialists at the middle school were also trained in Orton Gillingham. So we want to make sure that we always start with that basic fluency and accuracy of reading and if they need word study, then we're going to give them word study. One of the interesting pieces with foundations that we're going to begin to study is in third grade, there's a whole vocabulary piece in teaching of prefixes and suffixes and really having some different kinds of conversation for root words. But then you're moving into what are the different kinds of comprehension strategies that you're going to be teaching the students? So it all comes down to that diagnosis. At the middle school, what's been really interesting in the area of math is we only have that one math specialist. So it's trying to figure out how best, and I, please stop me if I'm, I'm not, you know, sharing it the right way, but it's how best to service the students who might need math intervention. So what we do is we work with some of our math teachers and we really give them those specific instructions on what to do with those kids and those strategies. Sometimes it means you've got to backtrack to lower level standards. So, and oftentimes, I think we've talked about this when we're looking to hire someone, you have an eighth grade teacher who teaches content. They teach algebra, they teach geometry, they teach pre-algebra. And now oftentimes they have to be going backwards to say, okay, so how do I go about teaching that number concept that they might have been missing? And that's where that math specialist will, and Zoe, quite frankly, will come in handy to work with those teachers and help with those interventions.
And then my last question, because we're still in the midst of budget season and I, I, I hear lots of people talking about, you know, class sizes and, you know, the math specialist and things like that. Could you discuss sort of how RTI could be impacted? You know, we have a very intentional class size guideline. You know, if, if we had more kids in a class, how that could impact our effectiveness with RTI? And, you know, the lack of a specialist in, in the middle school, how that impacts RTI?
Sure. Well, I think that the class size speaks for itself when I explained how a classroom teacher is intentionally planning for the 20 students, sometimes more, sometimes less within their classrooms. So if you think about that and you think of just one assessment and you've got, you know, 15 kids that met it and three kids below it and, you know, five kids above it, I mean, that's real intentional planning that has to take place. I would have to say that the numbers we're always so carefully watching are those first grade classrooms. I mean, a first grade teacher could have six different reading groups within their classrooms because of the range of readers that take place. So we really look very closely at the, those reading, those primary grades and trying to make sure that they abide by those class sizes because we know the challenges that would be faced as kids are coming into that grade level. And that's just developmentally what happens. I mean, if we all knew the, this is what you all do, then everybody would just be the best reader around. But we know developmentally that, that takes place. And then the same holds true in the middle school. Just because they may be sitting in advanced class doesn't mean all the kids are performing at the same level. There's still going to be a range within that classroom. And that range will vary. Sometimes even math becomes a little bit more challenging because it will range from unit to unit. Might have a lot of difficulties in the area of fraction, but then I'm a rock star in geometry. So it, it changes and all that formative assessment is so critical. So that planning for that group of kids, if we really want to differentiate the instruction and do that intentional planning and really provide effective instruction, to keep that class size small is really critical for us and critical to the success of all the students so that we can ensure that they're getting the best possible education and we're helping them to move forward in what their growth areas should be. As far as those reading and write, writing and math specialists, they're critical. Not only do they play a role with helping students that might need intervention, but they play a big role in our professional development. They are the ones who are in those classrooms modeling lessons for teachers. So when you start introducing a workshop model at the middle school to someone who's really been teaching a content area, that's real hard for them to take in at first. They have to try to figure out, what is that workshop model going to look like for me? I've got 42 minutes, so you're telling me I'm going to do a shorter mini lesson and then based on the information I had from yesterday, I'm going to probably divide them out and do some strategy groups and I'm going to have a small group here and I might have another group over here collaborating and another group over here independently working and I'm going to have to, to move around. So where that math specialist really plays a critical role is they can go in, they can help to model. They can model what a strategy group looks like. They can model what a guided group looks like for those, for those teachers. And then oftentimes, they do what they call a coaching cycle. So in addition to providing the support for intervention, they'll often do a coaching cycle where they're actually planning with the teacher for, let's say, five days, they're planning with the teacher, and then they're in that classroom helping them to roll out those lessons. And then it's a gradual release model. So day one, I might be modeling and then the next day, we're going to kind of do it together. And by the third day, I'm going to be watching you do it and then I'm going to be giving you feedback on how you're doing. It's non-threatening. You know, it's not evaluative. These coaches don't serve in evaluative roles. They're in there, they're supporting teachers, they're collaborating, they're, we're doing what's best for kids. And it always goes back to that conversation about students.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry. Every plan has to be reviewed. So when you asked, you know, what are, how has it changed over the past several years? One of the very positive things that's changed is our system of, of assessment. So it's a blessing and a curse. The better we get at assessment, the better we get at progress monitoring, the better we get at identifying. The more we identify, you know, the, the better we are at creating plans. So our specialists become, play a critical role in reviewing those plans. Just recently, we made an adjustment. We meet as a student study team every Thursday for the lower division and every Friday for the upper division. So because we did, we have created a, a larger number of differentiated instructional records which fall within that tier one, we found that, you know, we were spending a, a long period of time during those Friday and Thursday SST meetings going over tier one, tier two, and tier three plans. So now our specialists have taken to meeting with the teachers outside of that meeting to review our tier one plans. So again, this is all good news, but, you know, it, it takes resources to make sure that we are progress monitoring effectively, we are coaching our teachers effectively, we are looking at the fidelity of the, of the interventions that are taking place and then the instruction within the classroom. So.
Thank you. No, perfect. Any more questions for Julie?
Maria?
So it's sort of a group student meeting. You're talking about a bunch of students at the SST, is that what it's called? Sorry.
So the SST stands for that student study team, which we talked about for that tier two, tier three.
So that's where you would discuss the students that fell in each of the tiers? So then are parents aware that their students are in?
Yes.
And they have interventions?
Every step of the way, beginning with the dur, parents are notified that they're stuck, that a differentiated instructional record has been created for their child. If a child moves from tier one to tier two and tier two to tier three, they're notified. And then they're also notified, often they'll be shared on if there's a Google form, let's say, or a spreadsheet that's used to progress monitor. Often parents are shared on that at the middle school. So they are kept abreast of progress, you know, all along the way. Typically, we look at kids on a six to eight week cycle. So we'll have anywhere between six to 10 students a week. Actually, it's double that. I'm, I'm in char, I oversee the upper division, so I'm, I forgot to take into account the lower division. But we'll, you know, we'll review approximately 16 to 20 cases a week, every week.
And then theoretically, they roll off and, I mean?
Yes. You know, that's the hope. And oftentimes, and this is where the specialists plays another very important role, is determining, is this the right goal for the student? So if they've mastered that goal, oftentimes we'll look at, okay, what's, what does the rest of the data indicate and do we need to change the goal? So they aren't necessarily exited immediately because we want to ensure that they meet with success once they're exited from these plans.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you very much, Jill. That was really helpful and informative and.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is the budget update with Dr. Lettsi.
Yep. And this is a, thank you. Just, just very briefly, just to first say thank you to everyone who was able to attend the town council meeting last week. The, we had a continued dialogue with the town council about the operating in the capital budget. It was equally collegial and collaborative as it has been throughout the process here with them. And the Wednesday is the vote by the town council. That's typically, generally they'll begin their meeting with that vote and they'll read through the call of the budget, both for the board of ed and for the town. And indications, at least that we have at this point, are that the budget as presented to the town council would be the budget that they'll be discussing and looking to vote on on Wednesday night with one slight adjustment, which is the floor for West Gym. We were talking about a little bit and we're still investigating the water infiltration around that gym, what's happening with that floor. So instead of really trying, looking to receive that $125,000 for capital, this year we'll likely be looking for that next year, once we've solved this mystery. Now that we've had enough rain and snow and water, we should be able to track this down. It's interesting, just a year ago when we were looking at this, they were telling us that it could take seven years for the drought to be gone and for us to actually be able to investigate this. And in that conversation, we said that maybe we should just do it, right? Because it's seven years. But now that we have the, the moisture we need, we should be able to figure it out and we'll look to solve that problem. But beyond that, the capital plan, as was put forward by the board of finance, remains intact and our operating budget is at that 1.6% as we've been discussing. The, after Wednesday night, we'll be meeting as an administrative team for a while, looking at updated information around school operations and things. And then we'll be back to the board later in the spring with some recommendations for the final allocations of the budget. First, getting through Wednesday night and knowing what that number is, and then we'll take a deep dive into different information and be able to make some strong recommendations on how to go forward.
Jen?
How long has the gym floor been on the?
It's been a couple of years. Yeah, it's actually, this I think is the third year. The first year we asked for and received $25,000 for study because of what was happening with the gym floor. The, we did receive that, we started doing that work and that investigation and the engineering work there. Then last year, we received $125,000 to complete that engineering work and we thought hopefully to replace the floor, but it's, we just don't have all the answers we need. I should share and you, and you know because you're there, we are repairing the floor, we're patching it, we're making sure that it is usable and safe and appropriate for the kids. So it's not that, you know, we're, we're still using the space, but we also, you know, we know that it needs to be replaced, but we want to do it so that it'll last.
And if I looked at the schedule that you circulated in the Friday notes, we still have money left in that account that we can use to further the, the study work and repair work until, until we, and there, and the conversation that I heard last week was that they're receptive to that, that capital item, but because we can't really figure it out yet, it may be premature. So. Sherry?
So different topic, but I just, the, the town council provided some feedback that I thought was worthwhile to repeat for the board members that weren't there and also for any parents at home that weren't there. But they were quite emphatic in, in talking about the positive impact that both Brian and Joanne have had on the budget process, both in terms of the level of financial analysis, but also they, they were emphatic in talking about how much more collaborative the process is now. And I think we as a board and our community should be so grateful to these leaders for, you know, that positive impact that they've brought to this process that I think, you know, serves the entire, the whole community and delivers the best result for, for everyone. So I just wanted to repeat that and, and say thank you. And it was quite remarkable how positive they were in giving that feedback, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions or comments? Okay. So we will move on to the action items section of the budget and the item under that section is the 2017 New Canaan High School graduation date. I have a motion to approve June 20th, 2017 as graduation date for New Canaan High School with a rain date of June 21st, 2017. Could I get someone to move that? Maria, second. Brendan, discussion. Sherry?
So I don't, I, I actually received a few emails on the graduation date and I don't know if this is something we can take into consideration, but there were some parents who just wanted us to consider that having a graduation on a Tuesday, you know, would impose difficulty for any out of town family members who may be traveling in for the graduation and, you know, had to get back for work or, I, I don't know if we consider that or if we should consider that, but I just thought I'd bring it up for discussion.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you did because the, I did look back a little bit and to begin, the, the logic of the graduation date, as you know, we do 182 days and traditionally our graduation has been on the 181st day. And as I look back over the last four years, it has been on the 181st day. There was a change going back about five years, I think it was, when we shortened our year from 182 to 180 because of closings due to hurricanes, excuse me, what, what have you. So it is our, it's our practice to do it on the 181st day. The, what happens even doing that, you still have to adjust the senior schedules a little bit because of their exams and the timing of that. But going back also historically to look, we, we have had it on Tuesday before. I believe just in the last four years, we've had, well, this year would be a Tuesday, last year it was a Wednesday, in 2015 it was a Thursday, and in 2014 it was a Tuesday. So I think that doing it on the 181st day is important because it's, it allows them to make some adjustments to the exam schedule without turning everything upside down. What happens if you go back another day is you wind up with seniors who have to take three exams in a day instead of two. And you wind up with, in classes that have, don't only have seniors, that also have sophomores, juniors, whatever. It can really throw off sort of their scheduling for their exams and what they do. And I think the last part is that that graduation day itself is really not a school day, right? And we don't really, wouldn't count it as such. We start the day with a breakfast with our students and it's a nice celebration, they're all together, they'll often bring the yearbook, so we have that together. And then we go out to the field and we'll have graduation rehearsal and then they go home. So there's not, it's, it's not an educational day. So it would be, so I would recommend we stick with our, our practice of graduating on the 181st day, although I do recognize that it could be difficult. And, you know, of course, if we just had one fewer snow day, it would have been okay. But I think that the practice has worked for us.
Any other questions or comments? All right. So we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, I know every-
Okay, I know every senior parent is watching this meeting tonight. And so now you can go and make your flights and.
So will we send out a district email tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and we have done it. And the other, the point about the graduation date with Connecticut, they do ask you, actually require you to wait until April to set the date. But once you set it in April, if you miss any other days, if we have a freak snowstorm or something that had closed, we can stay with this date. So that's the, the value of waiting until April to set it is that it's, once you do, it doesn't move regardless of what happens with your, with your schedule. So our seniors will be graduating on Tuesday, the 20th, unless it rains, and then it would be the 21st.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lettsi.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Sherry?
Second.
Sangita? All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will move on to announcements and future business.
Yep, just very briefly, today began our sports, our spring sports season. Hard to believe, it's, it goes very quickly. I only have an update from softball who beat Joel Barlow today to open their season, so congratulations to them. The Cinderella was just last weekend, the performance for Saks. And it was another wonderful performance for our kids. And I heard from a few that they're very much looking forward to being in their new auditorium next year. As that continue, that work continues on time. The, of course, everyone knows spring break next week. And so to wish everyone a happy and safe spring break, and we'll be right back to it.
Okay. So with that, if I could get a motion to adjourn? Sherry, second. Penny? All those in favor? Any opposed? Everybody's going back for the basketball game.
There you go.